Today's episode is brought to you by Dr. Jeffrey Halsted, DMD. Dr. Jeffrey Halsted has been Canadagua's hometown dentist for more than 35 years, offering routine dental care as well as cosmetic dentistry, implants and dentures by their highly trained and experienced staff. Visit them online at canadaguodentistry.com or find them on Facebook and Instagram. Today, we continue our series previewing local elections across the Finger Lakes region by catching up with one of the candidates running for Geneva City Council. Chris Lavin joins me in studio. Chris, thanks so much for being here today.
I'm glad to have this time with you.
So let's start with the easy question. Why are you running?
Well, I grew up in Geneva and went away for 40 years, edited American newspapers and came back. And Geneva has really improved remarkably in some ways over those years. But I run the Boys and Girls Club of Geneva and I'm aware of some of the challenges that Geneva faces. And I see an opportunity to address some long ignored problems in Geneva and broaden the view a little bit of what a successful, long-term successful city can be.
When you look at your experience and your time running the Boys and Girls Club, what stands out to you as some of those issues that are most important for the city to address in the coming years?
Well, Geneva is, in some ways, they describe themselves as uniquely urban. It's in a rural area, but it is a small city with all of the facets, advantages and disadvantages of urban life these days. Its poverty rate hovers near 20%. And that raises a lot of challenges for the community that I don't think the city, because it's a small city, has begun to address at all. They have a labor pool, but they have a declining housing situation. And so Geneva needs to grow up, catch up with its new challenges if it wants to continue to thrive. Geneva, this will shock most people, but its taxes are 30% higher than Ithaca's and its services are not nearly as good as Ithaca's. It's 36% higher than Canadagua and its services are not as good as Canadagua's. And that's probably in large part because the city hasn't come to grips with the fact that its population declined and its revenues and its tax base declined, but they didn't stop spending. They didn't look for ways to economize within the government, to share burdens with nearby towns and cities, never really attacked any of that. They just simply kept raising taxes. And at this point, I think it's fair to say that Geneva's in a fiscal crisis that nobody's talking about. You can't really build a house in Geneva these days without your taxes exceeding your mortgage. And that's not a healthy economy. The poverty rate has, without requisite services to attack it, have put stress on the schools for performance. It's hard to recruit executives to Geneva or to Hobart William Smith Colleges and get them to live in Geneva. Doubt the school's quality if they have children, they can't find the housing they want because of the condition of the city's houses. So there's some real urban issues to take on, yet the town, the city has spent the last 25 or 30 years acting like the small town it once was.
We'll get into a bunch of those issues that you just mentioned here as we go. But as you're campaigning, what are the top two or three issues that you're hearing from voters, people who live in the city who are concerned about its future?
Taxes, taxes and taxes. It's very easy. It's the fiscal issues of owning a house, paying for it, particularly as you age. They have not, because of the tax situation, they haven't diversified the form of housing within the city. So if you get older, a lot of the older people, if they're affluent, they move to Canadagua to a retirement place or they seek the very wealthy, the bank presidents and people like that, they move to Florida to avoid the overall tax situation in New York, which is really also a challenge. So that is the issue in Geneva. There are other concerns about the past performance of the city council and its civility and it kind of acts, some of the people, there are a lot of council people in Geneva. There's nine councils per a city of 12,000. And that means a lot of voices, but are hard to get a consensus on things. So you hear a little bit of that concern among the voters too, that they like to live in, it's a very pleasant city. It's a great place to live. It's in some ways on the upswing, as are the Finger Lakes. But it's positioned to really benefit from that upswing in the Finger Lakes, but it's not making the decisions that will allow that to happen in Geneva. It's happening in better in other towns.
One of the first things that is going to pop into many listeners and viewers' minds is, well, you need more economic development. You need more development. What does successful economic development, given what you just described, the situation you just described for the city, what does successful economic development look like in the city of Geneva?
Well, generally, and I spent a lot of time as a national reporter and a regional reporter all over the country. So I've seen a lot of this in different places. I would say Geneva's approach, traditional approach to this stuff is like the catcher, not the pitcher. It sits back, and even now to this day, it sits back and says, well, we don't need to do anything. When they come and make their proposals, we'll see what we think. That's not the way successful economic development has been done for some years now, but that's still prevalent among some of the elected people of Geneva. We have a plaza sitting on Hamilton Street that is ripe for the kind of redevelopment that's happening all over America for diversified, instead of just a retail-based thing, they build a residential with it, doctor's office services and some restaurants with some retail. And you have a small, multi-purpose, multi-age way of doing things. It's being done all over America, but we just sit back and that place is now in receivership, owned by a bank. And there's no proposals or no focus from the city, from what I can tell, to really lead the way on proposals. You don't wait to change the zoning. You look at what are the needs of the community? How do you generate revenue from that asset? And then you put the things in place so a developer coming to town isn't starting from scratch. They're starting, they know what the community supports, they see how that fits with their plans, they may ask for some deviation, they may ask for a payment in lieu of taxes as well, but they don't start from scratch. Geneva sits back and waits and then they, even when there is a problem, like there's a problem in a development that's occurring in Geneva right now, there was a finance problem, an ambitious program kind of got stalled. There's no sense that the people in the city, in their economic development operation, are connected to that project and are aware of what the situation is and to see if there's anything the community can do to push it forward.
Is part of that, though, not also recognizing what the goals are and having clear goals for economic development outreach in the first place?
Yeah, and in some ways, it's easy for Geneva because they're not in an economic position to pick and choose. They are facing, when your taxes are 30% higher than, imagine running a mall and right down the street, there's another mall and your prices for the same product, or even in some cases, a lesser product, are 30% or 40% higher, you don't expect to see success in that mall. Well, that's what Geneva sort of represents right now. It's a great place. It's got great bones, it's got great history, it's got a Hobart William Smith Colleges, which is an amazing engine for economic development. It's got Cornell University, which is another engine, and it's got a regional hospital that will hold its own because of its location. Lots of assets, not working together too well, not being marketed together, not really driving. They're like a surfer who won't get on the wave that's going through the Finger Lakes. They like bobbing around in the water and hoping that a big wave picks them up.
When people think about the services that you're describing, oftentimes they're going to think about police, they're going to think about fire, they're going to think about EMS. Obviously EMS doesn't apply necessarily to Geneva. But as far as coverage of those three things, the services being provided by agencies directly connected to the city and ancillary, sort of secondarily connected, how good a shape is Geneva in right now in terms of being able to continue providing those services at the level that they've been providing them? And how should city council be thinking about this over the next, let's say, well beyond one term, five to 10 years so that those services can be maintained?
That's really the question. There's plenty of towns in America that does not have full-time overnight fire drivers waiting for a call. There's plenty of places that have very small fire police departments, given the population. Geneva's got professional services, that's another attraction. Good sewer plant, good water, all the things that make the preference to living in an urban space. And if you get a few miles outside of Geneva, you're on well water, septic systems, you're kind of camping, in my view. And that's a challenge. So Geneva, those are assets, but they have to be able to afford them and keep them. Right now, they're spending beyond their means and have for a number of years. That's how their taxes got so high, it's where that service got so high. They have to find ways to economize to keep those great services, more regional collaboration, more. The other problem, and this is, I'm always told not to talk about this because I might not get elected if I do, but the city of Geneva and the town of Geneva, in my view, are one community. And yet, there are people in the town, all of them, who benefit from the police department and the fire department that don't contribute to it. They work in Geneva, they go to church in Geneva, they shop at the Geneva Wegmans, they get the police protection and the fire protection in three quarters of their life. And even outside of Geneva, when there's a fire, professional firefighters of Geneva are always there first for a real call, because they're right there at the station and they're going. So all those benefits that leak over into the town and they don't contribute to have added to the city's financial situation. In some ways, it's very similar to what happened in Detroit at a much larger scale. Beautiful suburban towns with lower taxes and fewer problems, better schools surrounding a city that was at the core of their industry, but not the focus of all the assets of Detroit. That's Geneva, really writ small. The houses, there's urban prairie in Detroit, houses that have fallen down and stuff. Geneva has lost a lot of its housing stock in the last 30 years, but the economics don't allow you to replace those houses. So there's work to be done. Good thing is it's a very pleasant place. Good things are happening in the Finger Lakes. There's interest in the post-pandemic lifestyle. We have water, moderate climate, I don't care how cold it gets in the winter. You don't have the tornadoes. When I lived in San Diego, I had at least four times strangers staying in my house has fires raced across the countryside, burning homes. And it's the hurricanes of Florida place and the tornado alley is becoming, in the warming environment, even more threatening from Texas right through to the Carolinas. And so Geneva has a lot of good things going for it in the macro sense, but the city of Geneva needs to change and update itself if it wants to remain the heart of the Finger Lakes.
You mentioned two things in the last 15 minutes or so that really stood out to me. Civility among city council, and then also, I'm not going to call it sharing services or shared services, but working with municipalities that are around Geneva. Do you think a more civil city council would have the opportunity to better collaborate with some of the municipalities around the city to that benefit that you're describing?
Yeah, I'll give you a schizophrenic answer to that. I think the civility about working within Geneva is a challenge because, as I said, there's too many council people, there are nine of them. That actually allows some people to get elected who maybe aren't really elected material. Just, I'm not pointing out specific names, but it also allows not enough focus on the people who are there to actually deliver. That internal civility needs to be resolved. The public servants, I admire that they all show up for meetings and I care about the community, they should be treated even when they're dead wrong. The civility around Geneva, I think in some ways, it's time for less civility. The town of Geneva has been building its economy on the backs of the city's water and sewer system. You haven't been able, all the expansion, the new homes, all the things that have happened in the town of Geneva in the last 20 years have come about because the city gave access to these core functions. I think that needs to stop unless they want to start sharing services. Easily could share fire services tomorrow, easily. And it would be better service for the town, lower insurance rates in the town, and Geneva would get some help with maintaining that great fire department that it has, that I admire. But I think some of those things have to be confronted. Geneva would like to, the people, the town of Geneva would like to think of some big housing developments that are not going to happen without the city's water and sewer access. And I think those things need to be confronted. So maybe that can be done in a civil way, but I think in the end, it has to be confronted. We're in this together or we're not. Build your own sewer system, build your own water system, and then see what your taxes look like when you're done with that. But we'll see. But in general, I believe in civility and I would never raise my voice, I would never call a name, no matter how disagreeable. But I've been all over the country for many years and done a lot of government coverage. I've seen the good, the bad and the ugly of public service. But my bottom line is I admire people who show up and try, and that does describe everybody who's in Geneva.
We've talked a lot about the expenses that Geneva has and will have to bear and face over the next several years, but we haven't talked about infrastructure after the flooding this past summer. It seems obviously, you can't have a conversation about taxes or any of these other issues without talking about infrastructure. Where the city sits right now, where does it need to go in the next four to eight years to maybe start to wrangle some of the street flooding and things like that?
Geneva is also, it's 175 years that it's been there. A lot of it's as they dig down and see what's happening. But again, that's another thing that is city and town. A lot of the increased rainfall and these, what we, some people are seeing is sort of global warming rains that have overwhelmed the traditional system of drainage from the town, which is the top of the hill, through the city to the lake. Those things, the development in the town, particularly up along Preemption Road and Beans Hill, have added to the runoff that runs into the city and is part of the problem. Those things should be addressed together and they need to be as the city, 175-year-old sewer system and storm sewer system needs to be updated. But again, it's part of the financial challenges of the city. You have 30-year houses with water in the basement three or four times a year, that does not make you a nice place to live anymore.
Whether we're talking about habs, landfills, drinking water sources, invasive species, tourism, economic development, they all circulate around environmental issues or things we throw into that basket of environmental issues. How would you like to see the city move forward on those issues? And what stands out to you as maybe the biggest among them? Because obviously, the city isn't going to have the time or resources to address all of them all the time, but what ones stand out to you as priorities?
Well, the good thing is we have the intellectual capital to take these on. Hobart William Smith, the colleges have the Finger Lake Institute, they're doing a lot of the great research on things like the water quality in the lakes. But the biggest problem is that the town of Seneca Falls and the town of Seneca in Ontario County are poisoning the air and water of the rest of this region by hosting these incredibly... When I moved home and saw that the skyline had changed with these piles of garbage. So I think the city of Geneva, the town of Geneva, a lot of the towns around Seneca, in Seneca County and Ontario County need to mass together, put together a very good war chest to start bringing legal actions against. You can't let one city like Seneca Falls get bought off by a garbage company when the damage being done by that facility is well beyond the town of Seneca Falls. If that's the way this is going to operate, that you can just buy the town of Seneca Falls by covering their budget, the town of Seneca doesn't have also, which is where the other big pile of garbage is, is also getting enormous tax savings by hosting that facility. But that's at the expense of, I got up this morning, 5:00 AM, I was out in my yard and it smelled like the Seneca landfill over there in Ontario County had filled my yard with bad air. That is a threat to the region. We are a region now that's built for wineries, for agriculture. What the Mennonites have done in Seneca County and the Amish in Seneca and Yates County, they've transformed the region with their efforts. Those facilities are a threat and we need to have legal authority, legal attacks to stop this. We can't leave it to council people in Seneca Falls to settle a problem that's threatening the region, and that's going to take some money. So another reason to be economically smart about your government is you need to fight these fights if we're going to maintain the quality of life here.
And when we're talking about quality of life in any place, it's now become a major priority for Ontario County as a whole to address housing, whether we're talking median housing stock, whether we're talking about rent prices, whether we're talking about senior housing availability. All three are major issues that the entire county has to deal with. And presumably, now that the housing study is complete and the survey results are publicly available, legislative action will probably be coming in the next year or two. What would you like to see the city of Geneva do to enhance its housing so that it can start to move the needle in a positive direction?
Yeah, that's another area where we need to grow up from the small town that we are. Recently, the city council recently resisted a zoning change that would have allowed for the kind of modern housing that's happening. People aren't looking to build the 2,400 square foot on two acres of land anymore. It's too expensive to build it, for one thing. The taxes eat you up if you do it. So essentially, by requiring that kind of thing, and it's not modern housing anymore, you need to be able to deal with quality and density at the same time. Geneva needs to do that and do it quickly. There are also a number of properties that fell down over the last 30 years. There are vacant lots that are on sewer lines with water and power right nearby, but the economics don't allow for the infill housing to happen. So I think Geneva needs to come up with a plan where you don't have to be a developer to get a pilot. If you're willing to come in and build a two-bedroom, two-bath house on an infill lot, there should be a way of getting a three- or four-year tax moratorium from the school district and the city to build that house and start building the tax base again, diversify housing in general. And we need to get smarter about the realization that even the young kids who do want to go into houses, they would prefer a townhouse in downtown to our parents and our vision that we're going to be on, with two acres and a dog out in the countryside doing what we're doing. That's not the current economy and we have to get smarter about that. Geneva, that's why I think the redo of the Geneva Town and Country Plaza, built around residential, two towers, one for seniors, one for the rest of us, well, I guess I'm a senior now too. But we need to reflect on the fact that a lot of people in Geneva have a home that's a burden in their 70s. They'd love to live in Geneva as they play out the rest of their lives, but there's no options for them. So they move to Canadagua, or they move out to the countryside, or they go to Florida or someplace like that. We need to diversify. And a place like the Plaza, my God, acres of land begging to be used and now in a financial condition that may make it more approachable for a city with some ambition.
Concerned at all about the volume and trend line on rental properties versus owned properties?
Yeah, I'm a journalist, so I can tell you that Geneva has become a community of renters. It's at 58% of its residents' rent. That's complete opposite of the cities that we would identify as more successful. Skinny Atlas, Ithaca, Corning, places like that do not have that level of renting. That leads to a variety of things, cutting up old houses, Section 8 subsidies, about $4.8 million a year comes into Geneva in rent subsidies because the income of the families is below what's needed to sustain the current rental rates. That's not a bad thing. We have laborers, we have people, there are good people and they're part of the heart of the community. But when the numbers get skewed, then home values decline. Right now, a typical house in Skinny Atlas, median house is in the 400s. In Geneva, it's 117. Measurable difference. So we need to get back to a more balanced mix within our residents as well.
Aging population. We saw the report last month, basically reflects a 40% increase by 2040 in the 65-plus population, while all other populations, the demographics that fall younger than that, going to decline between 7% and 14%. Obviously, it's a forecast, so we don't know what actually is going to happen. But when you see that kind of trend line and you think about Geneva's tax base, what stands out to you as maybe the bigger concerns? And what can or should a city's role be in reversing bucking that trend?
Yeah, of course. I lived in San Diego, was the senior editor of that paper for 10 years, and I watched the vibrance and youth of the Mexican population and the way we dogmatically vilify those people as a tax on America. Actually, I think the great advantage for America and somewhat an advantage for Geneva is that we can attract younger immigrant communities to come in. You're seeing it right now, you see it, but you don't see it. Right now, there's a lot of dairy farms in our region who are run by three or four Mexican guys who came across, got their papers, they're all legal, everything's fine. But that young labor is floating a good part of the local economy right now. There are vineyards that are completely run on the back of young labor that came in from outside and we can attract. That's an American advantage. I think those projections all assume that the right wing in America is going to treat immigration in the negative way it has been in the last 15 years. But I'm a bit of a bomb thrower on that issue. My grandfather came here in 1905, came to Ellis Island. All he had to prove is he didn't have a lung disease. And he came in and ran three restaurants in New York City and the Commodore Hotel down there for you, was a great contributor to America. And he produced, a man who gave his wife nine children, my brothers and sisters, and all college educated and all contributing to America, and that's an advantage to us. And I think right now, when the Mexican consulate comes up here to do, update its papers on the people working here, I get a real sense, little old ladies from Penin and out in Manchester coming in, driving in the three or four Mexican kids who are running their farm for them and saying, please help these kids, get their papers in order, we got to keep them. There's a lot of that going on right now. I think it can grow. And I love the diversity of Geneva. I speak Spanish somewhat that I learned at San Diego, and I see the Puerto Rican families and the Mexican families and the longtime African-American families of Geneva. It's one of our strengths. And I think we can, this is a place where the immigrant can come and fit in and we need to embrace that because it is the future of the American economy. Or we can do what Japan did, keep the gates closed, get older and stagnate, have the economy stagnate for 20 years until a natural youth movement happened within our own numbers. It's crazy. But that's macro, it's national, it's regional, but I'd say that that's potential for America, for small towns in America too, that is not available around the world. There aren't a lot of places like America where everybody's dying to get in here. There aren't a lot of places like America where everybody's dying to get in here. And I think if we're smart, and our, I know that the, the economy, I watched the economy of the Southwest and the, the food produced in the San Joaquin Valley of California, it's all produced by the binational energies of Mexicans and Americans working together.
Where can folks learn more about your campaign? Or if they have any questions, where can they send those to?
They can, they can email me at chrisandlavin@yahoo.com anytime they want, and, or they can call my cell number at 619-895-5996. I'm an open book, a journalist, I think particularly if you're going to be a, a public servant. I have tea every morning at Grounded on Castle Street. I'm there for an hour and I talk to anybody who comes. But I'm, you know, it's a small town and this is a small campaign. It's a, you don't, you don't need a, a weatherman to tell which way our wind blows too much. So.
Chris, appreciate the time. Thanks so much for taking it.
Thank you.
That'll do it for this edition of FLX Today. If you'd like to hear more conversations like this one, check out the show on your favorite podcast platform or subscribe to the fingerlakesone.com YouTube channel. Have a great day and we will see you next time.